Yeah, so let's. I'd like to call to order. A regular meeting of the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority. Thursday, September 23rd, it's about 3:35 or so. And if we could have roll call, please.
Sorry, Director Abricca?
Yes.
Director Combs?
Here.
Director Pine?
Present.
And I'm not seeing any other board members present at this time.
Okay. Okay, so we do have a quorum and let's move on to approval of the agenda. If somebody could make a motion on that.
I move.
Okay, moved in second. And we'll have a roll call.
Director Abricca?
Uh, yes.
Director Combs?
Yes.
Director Pine?
Yes.
Agenda approved.
Okay, great. Okay, item number three is the. Approval of minutes of the July 22nd. Regular meeting. Any, are there any changes or? Corrections? If not, also will entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the minutes.
Okay. Second. All right, move then second, I will do roll call again.
Director Abricca?
Uh, yes.
Director Combs?
Yes.
Director Pine?
Yes.
Okay.
Here, I'm here, Gary Cremoni.
Okay.
Yeah, Gary's here too.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Okay. Next item, well, it's a public comment. And so this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on any. Topic or issue that is not on the agenda and. Understanding we cannot engage in any lengthy discussions. And so are there any requests? This point, Miko?
Jerry Hearn would like to comment.
Okay. Go ahead, Jerry.
Uh, good afternoon, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, great. Uh, I just wanted to let the JPA board know that last weekend, we held a very successful coastal cleanup day at two sites. It won at Cooley Landing and one on San Francisco Creek. We had 150 people at each site and just an amazing amount of garbage and. Both trash and some useful items got taken out and once again. We continue to be able to hold these, which is really nice. And we did it in a very safe and effective manner. And maybe some of you were out there, I know that Mayor Carlos Romero was out of Cooley Landing and did a lot of work. And got a lot of stuff done by himself, so thank you very much for this opportunity, just to say that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we'll move into our regular. Uh, business and. You know, just a quick word on the context of this, so out of our. Board retreat a few months ago, one of the areas that we felt was a priority for us for this year was to. You know. Basically understand the whole Safer Bay, the shoreline. Processes that are taking place, our involvement, we know there's. One shoreline in San Mateo County involved and then Santa Clara County Valley District. So this is in the manner of a study session. And you know, we'll get started. I think we will have also, in addition to our director giving us a quick overview. We do have some materials in our packet, but as I understand, I think we had also asked. Len from, Len Maderman from the. One Shoreline and then somebody from Valley Water, I'm not sure who, but they will also. You know, do a. A little presentation and then we can obviously take questions and try to understand this more, so. Yeah, I had it all, and again, this was a result, David Pine, who's the Chair of the One Shoreline. And I, along with Len and Margaret, did meet, I think before recess, just to frame this, to say, you know, it'd be good to. Study this and sort of collaborate on understanding this whole area here. So I'll hand it over to Margaret for, to begin our. Review of this.
Great, thank you Chair Abricca, I hope everyone can hear me okay, I am. Working remotely from the road. Kevin, if we could toggle to the next slide, thanks. So the board members are very familiar with, I want to run quickly through the scope of the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority. Safer Bay Shoreline Project. And for the benefit of those attending, make sure that folks are given the opportunity to see the whole context of this. Very sweeping, very large. Somebody, Dennis Parker is saying he's having connection problems, sorry. So anyway, just to give folks context. On this slide, you'll see in the upper left-hand part of the map is the northernmost boundary of Menlo Park. And in the bottom right is the southernmost boundary of East Palo Alto. Those various colored segments or reaches of this project encompass the entire, the entirety of the SFC JPAs Safer Bay Project. Different portions of this project have been more closely defined, perhaps because they're simpler, because there are limited options. And other portions of these reaches are less clear. There are either multiple opportunities or the best opportunity hasn't yet been selected. Those are indicated in some of the dashed lines. The scope of this project involves public partnerships with other cities and with other governmental organizations. As well, as well as private entities such as Facebook, PG&E and others. These alignments are tentative, we'll be going forward with some preliminary design work. And public engagement processes that will help define these reach and alignment alternatives more closely in the near future. Kevin, could you go to the next slide?
There's a bit of a pause, forgive me, it should go in a sec.
Okay. People can take in the view of this lovely slide. So while, while we're waiting for the technical process to work its way through whatever electrons need to happen, there we go. Some of the historical context, I know many of you are very familiar with this. It goes back to Len's and East Palo Alto's leadership more than 10 years ago. In a 2016 and probably before that, a 2016 feasibility study that described. The extent of, of the East Palo Alto Menlo Park Safer Bay Project. The 2019 feasibility study built on that and a 2020 MTC A-Bag Dunbarton Corridor Study further investigated what was necessary. In the area right next to the PG&E substation, the Dunbarton, the West Bay Shore and Dunbarton Bridge approach. So this has been an ongoing, a long time conversation. There have been inquiries, explorations, many collaborations, and there are many. Agencies, interested parties, non-governmental organizations who are all actively engaged in. Evaluating the best paths forward and being active participants in this conversation. We toggle to the next slide? And my overview on this is going to be fairly brief to make sure that our partners at Valley Water and One Shoreline. Have a chance to dive into their perspectives, which may be less familiar to many of the attendees and board members. Did lose the presentation? Kevin, would it be helpful to pull it up on my end?
Seems to be working better now.
Okay. Still waiting for it.
While that's waiting, the DWR grant is not 1.3 million, it's actually just over 1 million.
Margaret, if you're able to, why don't you try to share yours, just if you have it open, mine's not being very responsive.
I apologize for the interruption there, I don't know what happened. Kevin, are you screen sharing?
No, Margaret, I'm, I'm, maybe I was muted, I, I suggested that you try yours on your end if you have the presentation open. Having some trouble advancing, thank you.
Okay, I will do that. Okay. Sharing my screen. Give me a moment. Okay. So picking up where Kevin left off, the Safer Bay Project funding status is we have multiple grants. Going back to the earliest one received was from the Department of Water Resources. The next one that was successfully applied for was the FEMA HMGP or Hazard Mitigation Grant. For East Palo Alto and this was Palo Alto is considered the sub recipients or the, the, the primary on the grant. That grant is ostensibly for 17.2 million dollars. We won't be able to actually receive that money until FEMA goes through their environmental historic. Preservation evaluation, we anticipate grant funding being available in late 2022 or 2023. So there is a, a gap, not only in timing, but in dollars. So we're working through both of those timing and dollar issues. The next substantial grant, again, not in hand, but signs are pointing to yes. For a 50 million dollar plus the local match of 17.8 million dollar match from PG&E Facebook for FEMA BRIC grant. Where Menlo Park was the sub recipient and the lead on that grant. What we are estimating at this moment is that the total project cost will be about 130 million dollars. This does not include the Caltrans portion of the Safer Bay alignments. So of the 130 million dollars approximately with all of these, with the FEMA HMGP and BRIC grants. All told, about 87 million has been secured. We understand that a very rough estimate of the Caltrans Dunbarton Highway 84 project is likely to be. In the realm of a billion dollars. Right now, the players and the responsible parties for the project include East Palo Alto as the lead on the HMGP grant. Although the JPA is providing technical coordination and technical support. Menlo Park is leading on the BRIC grants and again, JPA is providing technical leadership. We're also providing leadership on the programmatic sequel for the entire project area. JPA is continuing to seek and hopefully secure additional grant funding for overall project needs. We take an active role in communicating and coordinating with members. At our own members as well as. Outside entities and other NGOs on what's happening with the project. We are at, for example, actively involved in staying in touch with Caltrans to make sure they're aware of our work and we are aware of their process. And we will be leading discussions with property owners and stakeholders and spearheading all of the. Public outreach and education through our community partners. And then I can toggle over to Rochelle Blank's slides, so if you give me just a moment, I will tee those up. And be ready for Valley Water's remarks. At this point though, that concludes my context setting remarks. If the members of the board have any questions for me, we can do them, that at the end or now, as is your pleasure.
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and do the presentations and then we'll do questions?
Rochelle, I can Vanna for you.
Okay, great, thank you, so this is Rochelle from Santa Clara Valley Water District. I'm a Deputy Operating Officer, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I, thank you, I, I've been involved with the shoreline project since as far back as 2010. Um, and this picture here shows the majority of the landscape in Santa Clara County. And if you go to the next slide, please.
Uh, Rochelle, I'm having trouble advancing it, I don't know why.
That's okay, when you get there, I'll just keep talking. So um, from, we began a feasibility study, working with the Army Corps. And signed on with those was Coastal Conservancy and we began that effort in 2005. And at about 2010, five years into it, it was becoming evident that working on. The majority of the landscape all at once was very difficult and going to be a challenge. So in 2010, we began exploring, looking at. How to phase this project or look at an isolated piece and the first piece was what we call EIA 11. And in course terms, EIA is Economic Impact Area. And it's essentially the North San Jose area between the Guadalupe River or Albeza Flue and the Caidi Creek. On Santa Clarissa, the Caidi Creek bypass. And it included the ponds, a 12, eight, a nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. And, and the city of San Jose owned a 18, included those ponds. The Coastal Conservancy is a partner because prior to this in 2003, they had bought up a good number of the former Cargill Salt Ponds, A1 through A17. And the city purchased A18 and Valley Water purchased A4. And what they soon realized is that in order to advance those ponds to restoration, they needed a flood risk management levy in place. To protect the low-lying communities along the shoreline, so that's how we ended up moving forward with the shoreline project. Um, in 2011, we advanced the shoreline project from 2011 to 2015 to an authorized. Project and it was approved by the Chief of Engineers and moved into preliminary engineering for about two years and then construction. For, uh, in about 2018 and it was funded with a fixed fund amount from the bipartisan budget act of approximately 124 million dollars. As we continued to work with the Corps on this and progress it, we did ask Corps to begin looking at future phases of the shoreline efforts for the remaining EIA's 1 through 10. And they did receive funding in 2019 to pursue the second phase of the study in EIA's 1, 2, 3, 4, all of 1 through 10. But about three months or first quarter into that effort, they again decided it was just too much to bite off and then broke off. The Palo Alto majority EIA's into its own feasibility study. And are seeking funding, which they have not received yet for a future Phase 3 for the majority of the Sunnyvale area. Um, EIA's 4 and 5 really overlapped the Coastal Conservancy self-based pond project and. Would really be realized through that effort. For the EIA 11 construction piece, maybe the next slide would be helpful.
And having issues advancing.
Okay, so the, the, it was basically, we're now looking at three phases of the study, Phase 1, 2, and 3. When the next slide comes up, you'll be able to see those phases. Uh, we're in Phase 1, it's construction now. But something that we've really come to realize is that the 2015 estimate was approximately 174 million dollars. And in the first two years of the preliminary engineering and design period from 2015 to about 20, late 2017. That cost had grown to 194 million. And flash forward to today. The Corps tried to put out for construction, the first three levy reaches, 1, 2, and 3. And when they put them out in 2019, it came back nearly double the engineer's estimate. And they could not award the contract, they need to look into headquarters, UCAS headquarters said, you need to look into what's driving these costs up. Because we may have to look at all of this, all of EIA 11 area and examine the cost drivers. And so the project was not awarded in 2020 as planned and all of 2020 was spent looking at cost drivers. In the end, we did get this back out for advertisement, the first three reaches, 1, 2, and 3, which is basically from Marina to the Don Edward Center. And it's roughly two miles, we did get that back out for advertisement and it came back at 130 million, so it grew about 40 million dollars. And in order to get that awarded. Valley Water and Coastal Conservancy had to set up, step up and request an amendment to the project partnership agreement. Where we said we would pay the federal shortfall and that is again because of the bipartisan budget act, which funded the construction is a fixed dollar amount and can't be increased. So the new cost estimate for this project has grown 267% to 518 million dollars. The Corps is only contributing 124 million dollars right now. Valley Water is responsible for nearly 400 million dollars for the remainder of the study. We do have funding. And have received grants, we received the Measure AA grant for approximately 61 million. We have state subventions qualifications. We're trying to. Go ahead and progress and get, enter into our final cost share agreement. And start, start setting up so we can seek reimbursements from that. However, it looks like right now we can really only afford the first three reaches with the Corps, which is from Albeza Marina to the Don Edward Center. So that's kind of where we're at with EIA 11, we're kind of facing some challenges to be able to see how we can complete this project. In Phase 2, the feasibility study has begun, it's about 3 million dollars in three years per the Corps' smart planning process, however. To date, we're now seeing that the Corps needs to request an exemption to increase. That funding by almost double to close to 6 million and by almost an additional three years. So something we're learning is that these projects, and I'm sure we also see this on, on the San Mateo County side, are, are large, complex, and becoming costly. Some of the things that we discovered in the first phase there in construction, putting this out for two years, is that dirt is really expensive. It's now approaching 15 dollars a cubic yard and upward and these are largely dirt projects, if you're going to really look at. Making them all levies and include ECO Town. So some challenges we're facing. This construction right now has a long window, we only have funding for half the project for Phase 2. Uh, the, the feasibility period itself is doubling and the Corps needs to get approval of their exemption waiver to go beyond the three-year, three-by-three process. And we're still kind of waiting for finalization of that. And the future of Phase 3, no funding has come through as of yet. So with that, I'll just kind of end and we can probably start discussions.
I think at this point, we will toggle over to Len's presentation and his slides are. Uh, ha, high memory, so he is going to be running his own slides from his screen share. Eko, can you facilitate that at this time?
Okay, hi, hopefully you can hear me.
Yes.
Okay. Hello, everybody. All right, thanks, Miko, I'm gonna screen share and. Here we go, all right. So just to back up a little bit. I was asked not just to talk about the shoreline of. East Palo Alto and Menlo Park, which I will, but also just to give an update on the district as a whole, what we've been up to, what our mandate is, things like that. I, I think the last time the board heard about the district was probably during its formation. Which was, you know, almost two years ago now when the legislation was signed, so. So does that sound good, Chair Abricca?
Yes, yes, I think that would be good.
Yeah, we go. Great, okay, so the way I start this narrative is San Mateo County. Of all California counties is the most vulnerable to the first three feet of sea level rise in terms of population, underrepresented population, property value, homes, contaminated sites. And we're up there in the, in the United States in terms of the number of people impacted by, by sea level rise, the first few feet. The graph on the left shows the comparisons between different counties, the taller the bar, the more residences. And orange bars represent whether those residences impacted by sea level rise are below the median income for the county. And, and yellow represents whether on average they're above median income, so San Mateo County really has a, is a huge issue for us. And the county and the cities weren't well positioned to deal with this. Issue on the Bayside, there are 12 cities, on the coast side, there are two cities and a lot of the areas unincorporated county. There had been a flood control district since 1959. In San Mateo County and they were the member agency to the JPA for a long time. But they didn't cover all the county, they covered about 10% of it, including about 10% of the Bayside and none of the coast side. And so that was felt that that was, that, that, that flood control district wasn't well equipped geographically to, to address the issue that was so huge for the county. And so many cities connected on the shoreline or adjacent to each other on the shoreline. They couldn't act alone independently to address this issue, so. The district was created, we take a holistic view to the threats incorporating climate change threats into traditional kind of flood issues. As well as the need for regional stormwater and drought resilience. Geography, a holistic look at the geography in terms of multiple jurisdictions and the objectives of our project, also holistic view in terms of using. Green infrastructure, private lands and turning water rays from, from something that had been considered only a threat into a, into an asset to integrate in the communities. So we were established January 1 of last year, startup funding from the county and all 20 cities in the county for the first three years. And, and our priorities for this fiscal year, which started about two months ago, is to complete our first construction project. There is a, I'll talk about that project in a second, but it's under construction right now. Yeah, to advance big multi-jurisdictional projects along shorelines of multiple, multiple cities. Um, but it's under construction right now, yeah, to advance big multi-jurisdictional projects uh along shorelines and multiple, multiple cities. Uh, and or the and or the county um work with cities and developers uh so that the public uh infrastructure and private property is is planned, so we're working on zoning and and general plans and specific plans. With cities and to develop a long-term uh stable source of funding for this work. And and we're, we're, our board has been exploring, uh, has a subcommittee to explore uh potential parcel tax, countywide parcel tax to do climate resilience. Um, and it would potentially include both uh resilience on the water side as well as on the wildfire side. So here's a snapshot of much of the county and various projects, uh, the ones that are in light blue are projects that we're leading. Uh, so the one closest uh to San Francisco Creek in the bottom right is the project under construction, Bayfront Canal and Atherton Channel. There's also an emerging project around all of Redwood Shores, which is Redwood City, San Carlos Belmont and the county. And where the airport, San Cross Airport is, um, and then our regional project in Burlingame and Millbrae Shoreline. And we have a flood early warning system, um, that's countywide that we're working on to to develop. There are other projects where we're partners on or potential partners. And there are two main prod, two huge projects that we plan to connect our work to uh Foster Cities Levy as well as a plan that San Francisco is is uh is working on for shoreline protection. And then, of course, we're a member agency of the JPA and uh and we'll talk about that yellow line there along the shoreline in a second. Um, this is the project under construction at Bayfront Canal, uh, Bayfront Canal runs. Let's say from left to right on this slide and it drains just uh where Marsh Road uh hits the bay. At near Bedwell Bayfront Park, also Atherton Channel drains into it from the bottom of the screen heading east. And uh and it's a frequent source of flooding for five mobile home parks that are in Redwood City and in the county. And this whole area is in the FEMA flood zone, um, so they had a, they had not just a long-term need in terms of sea level rise, but an immediate need. And there was a project uh that started planning in two thousand nine and um and it had some al- almost pretty much hundred percent designs. It when the, as of the time the district was established, um, in twenty twenty or January of twenty twenty, we certified the secret document. We put together a funding agreement um among um Redwood City, Menlo Park. And Atherton and the county, um, and we also secured the permits. So this was a big part of our activity, the first year was to get this project under construction, uh, which it did get under construction in May of this year. And it will be completed um by the end of January of twenty twenty two, so it's moving along quickly. The basics of the project are take water out of Bayfront Canal underground deposited into the US Fish and Wildlife Service ponds. By taking the water out of Bayfront Canal, we uh during the high tide, the water can't drain through this tide gate you're seeing. In fact, what you're seeing right now in this picture is during a high tide and a rain event, water is actually moving upstream from the bay. A Bayfront Canal, and that's exactly what we're trying to solve is is that issue. By diverting water into the fish and wildlife ponds. And here are a couple of pictures of it under construction, um, the bottom right picture are two culverts that will soon be underground, under the roadway. And diverting that water uh by by February first. Another project, big regional project in at Burlingame and Millbrae, this is SFO, they've been working on a shoreline protection program. To encircle the whole airport, their largest reach of the project is this blue dashed line. And they do not need to do that whole reach if they tie into projects to the north and south of the airport. And so we're put, we're uh the lead agency on a project south of the airport in Millbrae and Burlingame. Meanwhile, uh Burlingame in twenty nine, late twenty nineteen, December, came out with a study of its uh sea level rise vulnerability. And uh Millbrae did that in August of twenty twenty, so they had, we had these three independent efforts going on. Um, and it really made sense to kind of align them and connect them and uh and our agency is 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 doing that. Um, so that's what it looks like, uh, the pink line represents the shoreline of Burlingame and Millbrae tied into SFO in the upper right. And we also have to work on the creeks that run from the bay upstream. As as far as they would be impacted by the bay plus sea level rise. And so that's pretty much to the Caltrain tracks, the bar tracks over there. And um, and what the projects have agreed to do is share uh common objectives, the technical information. We're working on what it looks like to share environmental mitigations, um, they've agreed in concept to share costs. And to utilize uh land that they each have uh for the for the benefit of the project. The good news for us is this project received some targeted state funding from Kevin Mullin. That was in the budget that was signed today. And uh, and so that's, this project's going to be definitely going forward with uh planning and design uh work over the next couple of years. And and just say we have, we have a brick grant, um, that is uh all, it's been approved by Cal OES and forwarded to FEMA. Um, and we're pretty confident about it, it's a small grant for planning work uh on this, on this project. On development, meaning um land use development, uh, so the cities, as as you all probably know, require the new development in the FEMA flood zone built to a certain elevation, um, but that doesn't uh, that doesn't talk about elevation related to climate change. And so what we're trying to do is promote cities utilizing future conditions for climate in their planning. And this does two things, it incorporates protection um for new development and their surroundings. And it'll uh enables the private sector to join in the project, um, which the cities really want. And so we're working on zoning ordinances uh with Burlingame specifically, there's a a an ordinance related to sea level rise that's moving along through the process, um, also working with South San Francisco on their general plan. And uh red with Redwood City on specific plans um to uh to build resilience for future conditions. And so here's an example of map of future conditions that uh that is envisioned to become part of the new Burlingame zoning ordinance for the Bayside. And uh, and we're working with developers, uh, this is a developer along Colma Creek that's building on two sides of the creek. And in exchange for land rights, uh, they'll be doing improvements to the creek. Um, and then this is a picture of what we don't want to see, which is development right on the shoreline, this is in Redwood City. And with sea level rise, there's really limited opportunities to protect this property. Other than build, at this point, build a wall right in front of their front door. And those are the decisions that we're trying to avoid, uh, cities making is is to consider uh a climate uh future conditions and give it, give the projects enough space uh to enable to adapt to that. Um, in terms of elevations that we're working with, the daily high tide, uh, through, really throughout the the county and and in Santa Clara County is somewhere between six and eight feet. The mean high tide and the feet, so the FEMA one hundred years about four feet higher than that. And when you add two feet of required free bird, you get to twelve to thirteen feet. And our objective in our projects is four feet above that, so it's six feet above the FEMA one hundred year. Uh, four feet above the required free bird, free board height and about ten feet above the daily high tide. And uh, and so our, our objectives to avoid future risk and avoid the more costly and challenging work of retrofitting protection later is is to plan for it now and build in marches for their flood protection, environmental benefits. There's a group at UC Santa Cruz that is doing research with us on um on the the effectiveness of marshes in terms of their flood protection benefit. And uh, and we're looking forward to that information, especially in regards to Redwood Shores and and Burlingame. And then, of course, like Valley Water, we try to build trails into this, into these, this infrastructure at any point that we can. So zeroing in a little bit, and this is the last slide on on the area that that we're um it most interested in, here's um. Here's uh San Francisco Creek on the right side of the image, uh, as as Margaret uh discussed. When her images, Menlo Park is on the very left side, this is Marsh Road. You see what's labeled here is Willow and Highway eighty four, Dumbarton Bridge is up there. So the kind of the big picture, which Margaret also um provided, um, this is maybe a slightly different way, dumbed down way to look at it. Is the the Creeks Beta Highway one oh one project that was completed in December twenty eighteen. It's really also a sea level rise project because the 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 elevation of the levees is the same what I just, what I just showed on the previous slide, it's seventeen feet, which is ten feet above the daily high tide. And that's irrespective of creek flow. And so I think of it as a sea level rise project as much as this is a creek project. So that's been completed, connected to that is the JPA's uh project uh as part of Safer. And this was the subject of that Cal OES FEMA grant that Margaret talked about. And then, of course, there's the brick project, which is um submitted by Menlo Park, the JPA is a partner. Of course, PG&E and Facebook and a lot of agencies, uh, including One Shoreline provided letters of support, that kind of thing. Um, and then Menlo Park is working on the entrance to Bedwell Bayfront Park. Right now, as far as I know, it's still kind of a landscape effort, but I think, I think there's a lot of conversation about this being part of the of the sea level rise protection because it has to be, because without that little stretch. The rest of it doesn't work in terms of getting people out of the FEMA flood insurance program and reducing risk for the eastern part of Menlo Park. And then one shoreline's piece comes uh north of Marsh Road, if you will. And uh, and that goes all along the levy between the Cargill property and Menlo Park, and then it transitions to county and Redwood City. So the 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 two other pieces of this that you'll notice there are gaps, one is that yellow white dashed line that just appeared, that's Bedwell Bayfront Park, it's high ground. There's really no reason to build something there as far as we know, and then there's a question mark in terms of how this gap will be filled, what the alignment would look like. As uh, and and there is, there is potentially going to be another study, there was a study of this area before. That MTC uh ran and um and there's a, there's talk of another study potentially to look specifically at that gap and how the protection would cross the highway. And that concludes um my presentation, Margaret, so I'll stop sharing and turn it back to you.
Thanks, hon.
Yeah, so let's uh, let me go to the board first for um any questions on any of the presentations and uh you know, perhaps we can keep track of the questions uh as well as later, we have uh, public and staff from other cities or entities, any questions they might have, even if we don't have all the answers today, but let me, let me uh go to the board first and I I do know that uh Vice Chair Drew has to definitely leave by four thirty, so I'll I'll call on him first for any questions or comments he might have on any part of the presentations.
Drew?
Yeah, I think, thanks, Chair Abrika, I I don't have any questions at the moment.
Okay, all right, anybody else on the board? Have any questions or comments on any parts of the presentations? You know, just, just jump in, I guess, at this point, whoever has it.
A question on on timing, there's a lot of different projects that have been briefly discussed today. But I I think it's safe, is it, it's safe to say that the project that's most imminent would be these Palo Alto levees? Is that, is that the case?
I think the part of the construction that's most imminent may be the East Palo Alto levees, but before we get to that, we need to release our NOP and go through CEQA. At least at the programmatic level and then specifically at the project level for those reaches, so that's the first step. And we anticipate doing that first, um, of course.
Yeah, any other questions? If not, I can uh, just open it up for any member of the public. And of course, that includes other staff members who may be uh joining us from other jurisdictions, uh. And Nico, maybe I'll just ask you to keep track and see if people raise their hands or we can do that.
Do you have any public comments or any staff members from any of the member? I don't ha- haven't received any comments.
Okay. Uh, or, you know, having heard from the three presenters, any other things that you want to add or maybe even cross questions from the different presentations?
We have a hand raised right now.
All right, well, let's call on that person then.
Mark Danan, do you want to go ahead and speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, yeah, we can hear you, yeah.
Yeah, hi, my name is Mark Dine and I live in Palo Alto, um, I'm actually visualizing the LoMeister Trail right now. To follow up on a question, I mean, there was kind of a nebulous answer as to when this would start. There's going to be huge impacts in East Palo Alto and it's really good idea to prepare the community for major construction like a levy. I- is there any rough idea of when this would actually start, is this like two years out, is it three years out, is it six months out? I mean, is there, I know there's a lot of bureaucracy that this has to go through, but is there anything that that we can say to people who have questions about, you know, roughly what this is going to look like and when it's going to be planned and when it's going to, you know, they're going to start?
Chair Abrika, I can speak to that question. And perhaps, and perhaps Tess and Kevin can chime in with some more details. Mark, it's, it's going to be at least three years before actual construction will happen. We need to go through a process of environmental review that includes a lot of community outreach and education. So there's going to be an awful lot of opportunity and we're going to be very proactive about reaching out to the community. So that folks are very well aware of what this is going to look like, how it may impact their lives. Construction projects are noisy and dusty and intrusive and you know, while while we can do our very best to mitigate those kinds of impacts, there's no getting around some of the large yellow pieces of equipment. That said, um, as we progress through that environmental review process and refine our designs. There will be a lot of opportunity for the public to see what those designs are going to look like and to provide their input. What we're looking at in terms of different strategies vary depending on the reach, we have more room in some areas, less room in others. And in some places, we want to make sure that we have transition zones or ecotone levees. So there's likely going to be a mix of solutions depending on where, what part of the project we're talking about. But in terms of East Palo Alto, if we had shovels in the ground before three years, I would be over the moon. I don't anticipate it any faster than that.
Okay, great.
Thank you, okay, any other uh questions um coming up or?
Jerry Hahn.
Uh, yes, thank you very much, uh, Margaret, you and I were having a conversation about the uh the intersection of some of the other building projects in East Palo Alto and the the flood, or excuse me, sea level rise projects, could you explain a little bit about that, I'm really thinking more about the uh, the uh pollution efforts and things like that?
Sure, so as folks may be aware, there is an area of East Palo Alto being considered for redevelopment. A lot of that property is considered a brown field. It has legacy contamination that has been remediated. Although it's been remediated to a a condition satisfactory perhaps for industrial use, not for residential use. In a couple of locations, we are looking at property redevelopment, capping soils that have residual contamination. The capping of those contaminated soils is not something that the JPA can undertake. Only the property owners are responsible for those activities, remediation activities. For us to pursue our uh, sea level rise and tidal flood mitigation project, those properties need to have that remediation, that soil needs to be capped because they are right up against one another, they're literally overlapping. So a levy would be part of a cap and the soil fill for the redevelopment would be maybe part of a levy buttress or a levy extension on the landward side. So one has to come before the other, the redevelopment has to figure out what it's going to be. And the soils need to be kept, that kind of remediation needs to be underway or completed before we can complete our shoreline um tidal and sea level rise mitigation project. Jerry, I hope that explained what what you were thinking of, are there other contamination issues that you had in mind? Some people have.
That, that was what I, I just thought that uh we, it would be a good idea to bring that up when you're thinking about timing, because that means that uh, the timing for the S, the JPA project. is somewhat dependent upon the timing of all those other efforts. And, and the agreement to actually do that kind of work moving forward with those developments, at least in those few spots.
Right, and, and
About timing.
Yeah, we, we, we do hope that that timing is fairly closely aligned. You're right, we can do some, you know, working to the left, to the right, but we're, we're hoping that the timing i- is fairly closely aligned.
Right. Thank you, Margaret.
Yeah. Any other, uh, questions?
It looks like Mark has another question or comment.
I do, yes, hi. Um, I guess I just wanted to ask this upfront. It may be completely, uh, impractical, but one of the issues we have here in East Palo Alto are these big power lines running through the community. There's already been multiple plane crashes, one last week, planted power lines. Is it feasible to put some sort of, I don't know, a conduit through a proposed levy that would both underground the power lines or is that completely unfeasible or infeasible? It's something that, um, would be a real win for the community if we could both get a levy and get rid of the high tension power lines from PG&E, um, that run right along the shoreline.
Mark, it's a great question. I don't know, I, I have no idea about the technical feasibility of undergrounding transmission level power lines. Because PG&E is a working partner of ours, I'm happy to ask them that question. I, I don't have the answer now, but I am, we can follow up and put that in our meeting notes following the meeting.
Yeah, that would be wonderful because my impression is that there's going to be a ton of permits that need to be pulled for this. If it's kill two birds with one stone, if they don't have to handle the permitting for this major construction project, it might be a little bit easier to get through. I don't know if it's unrealistic, I have no idea, but I thought I'd ask because, uh, if you don't ask the question, you'll never get the answer. So, thank you.
Yeah, sure. I, I can, I can say that the cost of undergrounding transmission scale electrical is probably outside the budget and scope of this project. But to the point of it being a hazard and there being an opportunity for PG&E, it is absolutely worth a question.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Uh, so I have one question that, um, the, in some ways, the discussion questions that Margaret put up there, that sort of touch on in, in certain ways. But, so I, you know, my assumption is that, uh, the, the staff or, you know, the, the directors or, or staff, in these three entities have, obviously for this presentation, but, uh, just in the matter, in, in the course of, in, in the course of business, you might say, that they do consult with each other, they check in, they, you know, what, what's going on, et cetera. So I, I'm actually interested in hearing from the three of you some ideas or some issues that you see that the JPA, for example, or, uh, the Board of Valley Water or, uh, One Shoreline sort of need to keep, uh, keep an eye on or, you know, need to begin thinking about further. And it could be in any area, whether they're, you know, jurisdictional issues, financial issues, et cetera. So I occasionally do that with just in the city council for me because the staff are the ones day to day doing all the work. And they run into areas sometimes where they either need direction from the board or the boards need to, or the councils need to explore that. So I'm, I'm actually just curious to see what, what kinds of questions do you guys have now? Or things that we could put on the table for further discussion later on? That need to be addressed in some way. May, maybe there aren't any, but just thinking about it.
Director Abrika, um, Margaret here. One of the questions I have, and this is aimed, I think, for, for Rochelle's consideration. Santa Clara Valley Water District has a very robust relationship with the Army Corps. San Mateo County does not. It's my very understanding that the reason for that is that unlike Santa Clara County through Valley Water, there isn't a ready source of community match funding in San Mateo County. So I guess, uh, a, a question of Rochelle, what is it like working with the Army Corps? And a question for Director Klein and for Len about the contemplated future of, uh, the result of a future ballot measure. Do you see that working with the Army Corps for San Mateo County is something that would benefit shoreline projects?
So this is Rochelle. Um, working with the Army Corps has its challenges. You are stuck with their processes and you have to go through feasibility. They're now following a smart three by three planning, so that has been a little improved in that feasibility. It limits feasibility to the three years. Um, it's supposed to streamline it, but as you can see with the Phase Two area in Palo Alto, they are looking for an exemption to expand it three more years. So you just have to be willing to work through their processes. Funding, it can be a challenge at times because it comes through regular, um, annual appropriations or as in the project for Phase One EIA 11 area of North San Jose, funding came in from the Budget by Partisan Act and they're saying it's fixed. They can't have any more funding added to it. So it, it, it can be challenging. You have to understand their processes quite well to be able to, um, carry a project through with them from beginning to end. And, you know, getting grants along with the federal funding can be challenging as well because you, a lot of the grants have limitations such that, it's reimbursements and reimbursements, it could be based on the local, local share only or no overlapping state shares if you have a state partner, as we do with the coastal conservancy. So that's what I can share about that. I think at the end of the Palo Alto feasibility study, discussions will occur with Palo Alto and that is this the process they want to continue in? And how are we going to fund this? Because as I noted on the price tag for EIA 11, it's now in the, um, 500 million range. And one agency alone can't do this. So that's why I offer up.
Thanks, Rochelle.
Yeah.
I guess I would, I would just, I think Margaret was also addressing that to us. I would just say, for all the reasons Rochelle articulated, we're, we're not actively pursuing a core partnership on our piece, but, um, it's, it's kind of easy to say for, for this area because our piece is really picks up north of Marsh Road, so it's a relatively small piece of the footprint. But, you know, I mean, as we, as, if the brick money comes through, obviously that's another federal, different federal source with substantial local, um, private funding through PG&E and Facebook. If that funding comes through, that's a, that's a good narrative for, for how you don't have to do a six years of feasibility study to, uh, to achieve a project. You can, you can do a, what we did for a feasibility study, which was maybe eighteen months. And that was locally funded, uh, and, and some DWR money. And, um, and then you're ready to, to submit for, for other funds. So there, there are a lot of funding options out there. I, I, I wouldn't hang my hat on the core, um, for, for our work. Yeah.
Excellent.
Any, any other questions or comments? This definitely has been very, uh, good to, to just kind of get an overview of the, the, you know, the three entities and just a reminder that we, we share the bay and we share the shoreline and we share all the risks and the possibilities as well as all the challenges that, that come with it. But, um, yeah, any other?
You know, I, I would just say, Chair Abrika, that, um, if you just look at the area of Brown Bedwell Bayfront Park, it's complicated and there are three different, essentially three different projects there. And we're all, we're all, uh, related and, you know, the JPA board relates us, uh, as you indicated, really in the intro to this part of the agenda. But, but Menlo Park is doing the entrance. You know, we are in conversation north of Marsh Road along Menlo Park and uh, Redwood City about what the future of the shoreline will look like there with, with people who are working on that. And then, of course, there's the brick project that the JPA and Menlo Park are taking lead on from Bedwell to, to the PG&E substation. So even in just that small piece, um, there's really a need for coordination and, and, and it's not just the JPA or One Shoreline. It's a lot of it's Menlo Park as well as the city because they have that, that particular project that they own. And, and each of those pieces is critical. Uh, without any one of them, even the small just entrance to the park, the whole thing doesn't work for its objectives. Um, and then, and then you have the, the bigger gap at the highway, uh, you know, along from, how do, how do we get from essentially the north end of Tate Street to the PG&E substation north of 84? And that's, that's a big question. It relates to the Loop Road and the, and the Ravenswood Business District development. And there's just, it's a, it's a big topic. So, so I, I guess I'm just saying this is super complicated and, and I think we all have to stay diligent on the need to work with each other uh, on a relatively regular basis about the progress of our planning.
Yes. Uh, yes, that, that was a good, uh, good summary. I would say that given the, yeah, the multi-jurisdictional nature of this, but very active, I think now at least a lot of things are going on, a lot, all the entities are now paying attention to this, I think. So, but it will require uh, more regular, I think, checking in. If, I think the staff is probably, you know, does more of that just by the work. But even at the decision-making level to, to stay, uh, yeah, getting updates or just try to anticipate issues or as they come up for, see how we can all work together. So, yeah. I think that's good. Okay, so I think if, you know, if there's no other questions or comments, definitely appreciate everyone's, uh, participation and the information you've brought to us and we'll stay, uh, you know, we'll stay connected and, and touched and, you know, I think with the JPA, we're very lucky. We have representation from Valley Water with, uh, Gary and then with David, uh, from One Shoreline. So we are, uh, and then we have our different cities and, and stuff, but, yeah. Okay, well, uh, I think that will conclude our, our study session then. And once again, thank you, everybody. And, um, we'll go on to the, um, Executive Director's Report. Okay, okay.
Hey, thank you, Director Abrika. Um, so keeping things relatively brief, since you've already read this in your board packet, reporting on the progress on our Reach One downstream project. We have, we received a responsive bid for selecting our, uh, for monitoring and reporting. The HT Harvey contract will be on, uh, your agenda later. Interpretive panels and a commemorative bench, um, are in the design stage and nearing finalization. We're working out some details about fabrication and placement and we are aiming for an end of the year conclusion to that process. And my slides don't want to advance. The end of the year before my slides advance. There we go. Page two. So we're continuing design evaluation and minor changes to reduce impacts. We have been slightly delayed on our lead submittal because we are working through some cultural resource questions, which, uh, if there are any questions, Tess can speak to, but it does not seem like there are any impediments. We just had to go through an evaluation process. Uh, we've made significant progress reaching out to affected Palo Alto property owners from whom easements may be needed. And our, uh, US Army Corps of Engineers CAP 205 Team Charettes process uh, has been convened and concluded very successfully. And together with our US Army Corps of Engineers folks, we have a tentative date of October 25th or a community outreach, uh, event that for us provides an opportunity to do community updates about what's happened uh, since the last community update. And it's also their NEPA scoping meeting that satisfies your NEPA requirement. And, uh, on to, uh, working our way up the watershed. Initial site investigations have been completing, have been completed. Uh, we're working on, uh, set design that may be feasible from an engineering standpoint, uh, provided certain assumptions. The Information Gaps Memo has been drafted for a geotechnical and environmental evaluation. We held a consultation with NIMF on, uh, the 15th of September and we will be completing, uh, feasibility, feasibility technical memorandum by the end of this year. So things are moving along well and our collaboration with Stanford continues to, uh, grow and be collaborative and a positive relationship. So for SAFER, back to the product, the topic of the day, we had a very effective presentation to the BRICS Committee on September 1st and we got their agency feedback. And that's being incorporated into our pending notice of preparation for CEQA, which is planned for release in October. And we are working right now on applying, uh, for a Measure AA grant. We're going to be asking for two and a half million dollars for each of two years. And that money will be used for programmatic CEQA for the entire SAFER project and, uh, project level CEQA for East Palo Alto reaches and some additional supportive studies and public outreach and education. On the operations and admin side, our banking transition is complete. Yay. Uh, on your, uh, consent agenda today is the conclusion of our social security insurance and CalPERS balloting. We conducted, as some of you might know, a very successful collaborative webinar with headquarters FEMA. On August 24th, we learned about FEMA's new risk rating 2.0, which will change the way insurance is, flood insurance is, um, evaluated according to risk, according to news, uh, actuarial information, updated actuarial information. And it is more equitable and, uh, will go into effect, uh, in, in October. We had over a hundred and sixty people there and all the results of the webinar are available on our website. And Nico and I are hard at work creating a board handbook. That's, that's the, uh, that's the Director's Update. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Not hearing any at this point. We'll continue then with the, uh, item seven, which is the consent agenda. You just mentioned one item, I think that.
This consent item, yeah. What, this consent item is the culmination of the, um, formal process that required us to clarify that, um, the JPA employees who have had social security deducted from their paychecks as well as the 403B deduction for CalPERS that for both CalPERS and social security to have no confusion about which retirement benefit should prevail, that we have elected this monthly process.
Okay, all right. So if, uh, there are any questions and if not, I can entertain a motion for this item. Okay, all right. So if there are any questions and if not, I can entertain a motion for this item.
I'll move our approval of the CalPERS SSCI, SSI, Section 218 resolution.
Okay, all right. I'll second. And we could have a wrong call on that.
Director Abrika?
Yes.
Director Pine?
Yes.
Director Cramen?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, motion carried. Next section is some action, action items, number eight, a couple of resolutions.
There you go. Resolution approving our consulting services agreement. This is the responsive bid that we had from HT Harvey and Associates for mitigation, monitoring and reporting. As you may recall, the first three years of that permit requirement was part of the downstream project, project funding. The consecutive seven years is now being shared by all the members and this is the first of seven years for conducting that required mitigation, monitoring and reporting under this contract.
Okay, any questions on this consultant services? And if not, then also entertain a motion. Keep it going. We'll, we'll take turns. I'll, I'll make a motion approving a resolution for the consultant services agreement for mitigation, monitoring and reporting. And the rest of the text.
I'll second that.
Okay, move in second and we'll have a.
Director Cramen. Yes, Director Cramen is no longer on the call.
Yes. So you want to continue with the vote or so?
I don't believe we have a forum.
Don't have a forum.
Well, I thought, oh, you said Gary, Gary stepped out?
Yeah, he's no longer on the call.
Oh, okay, yeah. All right, well then we'll leave these two items for the next meeting. And yeah, busy times. So you know, there are any, David, you have any comment or any questions under or comments, information and?
Nothing today.
Nothing today, okay. All right, well, thank you, everybody. I think with this, we will at this point, just adjourn and just bring back those two items for the next meeting. And we'll be fine. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody. Yeah.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.